Yes.
Ms. Holder, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Mr. Rob.
President.
All persons in the conference.
Very good. Is your first meeting back after a vacation?
I know, I know. I was getting to retirement long.
So, watch her, Josh, make sure that she does a good job. Deputy Park for Lucy Don. He was the deputy park and he killed it last week.
Oh.
Watch the tape. Anyway.
Maybe you're a dollar time to be honest.
Alright, can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I proudly declare the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Evening, Ms. Lyons. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Mr. Lynn Acker.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Acker. I live at 722 Bruce Drive. In 2006, we built a home here in Hampshire. Frankly, we did not expect to have chickens living next door to us. And frankly, if I wanted to have farm animals, I would have bought a small farm, which we did not do. I am opposed to the chicken ordinance. I think your folks had that on your agenda for tonight. However, I accept the fact that it's been passed and approved, and I need to live with the ordinance as written. A couple things though. According to the information in tonight's packet, chicken licensees were surveyed for feedback regarding the ordinance. I think that's a very good thing to do. My question is, why weren't the people that lived next door for licensing survey? Get our feelings and opinions. It seems to me it was something that should be addressed because how are you going to find out the opposite views? Existing ordinance limits the four hens. If the ordinance remained in force, limitation should remain. If not, where does the number stop? Is it six? Is it eight? Is it ten? You just open the door for it to keep growing. The existing ordinance requires that chickens be effectively screened from adjoining properties. What happens when there's a swale and the fence or barrier is down in the swale? And that needs to be re-looked at to see what is effective screening and is effective screening even required? And I think that's one of the questions with blood alcohol licenses, is that it was a burden for them. I would have been much happier without the fence than I am with the fence. The other question is regarding the shed can be used, apparently modified, for a chicken coop and the house of chickens and protect them. But if I understand that there's no requirements similar to what there is for a shed and how it has to be attached to concrete piers. Now, maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but I think that needs to be looked in and addressed. That's my comments on the ordinance.
Thank you for having me speak today.
You're welcome.
Thank you for this evening.
Okay. Alright, before you, you have the meeting minutes for May 18th, 2023. Please review them at this time and let us know if there's any changes, additions, or corrections. Deputy Park, please continue.
I wasn't here.
Any changes in this?
I said you have one. I did not.
She's like her dad.
I did not need to watch the video. On this, but it was... Oh, under committee assignments, I believe I abstained from voting for myself on the committee.
Any other changes? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes with the change that's presented by Trustee Kelly. Second. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kirk, what call, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Rob. Ms. Holder. I wish you patience.
Alright, next, we have a pretty historic thing happening this weekend here in Hampshire. The Trinity Lutheran Church is celebrating its 140th anniversary right here in our little town. And that's a great feat for any organization, especially one that lives here in Hampshire. Pastor Rudolph is here tonight. And we have proclamation to read and it says that whereas in 2023, the Trinity Lutheran Church celebrates 140 years of congregation and service of the Hampshire community. And whereas the Trinity Lutheran Church and schools is home to various ministry and mission groups that range from study and advocacy to direct service around the United States in worship, education, counseling, volunteerism, music and art. And whereas it is a desire of the village board and the board trustees to recognize those organizations whose purpose and endeavor remain dedicated to the community and involvement in service. And whereas it is privileged to extend the expression of our esteem.
Hey.
Very good.
Esteem and best wishes to the members of the congregation of Trinity Lutheran Church on their 140th anniversary. Now, therefore, I, Michael Reed Jr., President of the Village of Hampshire, Illinois Church, urge all citizens of Hampshire to join together in recognition and appreciation for members past, present, past and present of the congregation of the Trinity Lutheran Church for their commitment and contributions to our entire extended community. That's it. So I'm going to sign this. And this weekend, do you want to speak about what's happening this weekend?
This weekend, we're having a special service at three o'clock in the afternoon. And I believe an invitation was sent to the city inviting members of the council. And that's a three o'clock and a special service following will be a program outlining the history of the church. And then also President Reed will be presenting some comments on the importance of church and community relations. And following that, there will be a catered meal in celebration of this small congregation. Trinity Hampshire was started with 16 members. And how time seems to go around, we now have 16 active members once again. But anyway, thank you for that proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this Sunday. Sunday, the 7th. Thank you for being here this evening.
This Sunday, the 4th.
Well, the 4th, I'm sorry. Alright, next, after that, we have the reappointment. Dr. David Scarpino is here. He's the guy in the mustache on the side, trying to hide. He has served on our police pension board for quite some time now, and his appointment is up. I did ask Dr. Scarpino if he'd be interested in serving again, which he was. And he's here to answer any questions you have about him or his service. His information is in the packet. He did follow the process. Other than that, I would entertain, if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. David Scarpino in the police mission.
I'll make that motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kirk, can you call the board, please?
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
We should pass that through.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We would ask your consideration of a motion to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Patrol Order of Police Labor Council. You have in your packets the contract that we negotiated with the FOP this year. I'd like to thank representatives, the local representative, the FOP, who negotiated in good faith with us. We met five or six times. It was a good, a very good process. Chief Pan is with us. Would you like to ask any questions about the contract? Chief and Lori really took the lead on this this year, so I was able to take back seat life and worked that very well. So you have results in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd like to ask for consideration.
Can we ask what the vote was on the officers under this agreement?
I don't know if that was shared with us or not. Just we were notified that it was approved.
I do have a couple of questions just for verification, maybe. In section 1.2, bargaining unit work, it starts to talk about part-time officers. Probably how I hear is it will not result in any deaths or reduction of normal work hours or overtime hours worked by bargaining unit members. So am I reading this correctly that part-time, and then it goes two sentences later to say part-time officers will not be assigned to an assignment that would otherwise be considered to be an overtime opportunity for a bargaining unit member unless such assignment is offered first to members of the party. So am I to understand correctly that a part-time officer cannot take any assignment unless every officer said they don't want the overtime? So would you like to reply to that?
Sure. Typically, typically, that's true. And that's been one of the sticking points over the past several months since we hired our most recent part-time officer. We did get some, we did work some language into the contract, which gives us a little bit more a little bit more flexibility on that. It allows us to use that officer to cover some coverage gaps and also to use that officer in addition to the other officers for special events and that sort of thing.
It just feels weird that being such a small or smaller department and having part-time officers that it makes that position, I would assume, very tough to recruit for because somebody doesn't know what their schedule is going to be because basically everybody else has to say they don't want those hours.
And that, and that, that's true. But this is one of the big, with FOP as a whole, not just our collective bargaining unit, but with FOP as a whole, they're very protective of what they consider the work or the property of their employees. And so we were happy to succeed, to have some movement on this. The way the contract, the previous contract was drafted, they couldn't use the part-time officer at all unless those hours had been offered to members of the unit first. So this, we do have some more flexibility in this contract than the last one. It's still, it's still pretty restrictive on our management rights, though, regarding that part-time person. I know the last part-time person that we had hardly had any hours on the schedule before he went full-time. And that's the reason why.
Talking about the overtime then, in the, in the schedule, I had to do a little math to figure out the 14-day, 84-hour, if you did 12 hours with the ons and offs.
Right.
I need an eight-hour to bring it down to 80 hours. And I understand that overtime is any time over that 80 hours in those 14 days. But there are multiple points in this contract that speak to exceeding 40 hours and then receiving overtime. And so I'm a little confused if overtime starts at 80 hours in a 14-day period or if it's 40 hours, and if it is 40 hours with the two on, two off, three on, two off, three off, that schedule, I know I just messed it up. Where does the 40 hours come in? How do we figure when somebody's hit a 40-hour period that they get overtime for that versus an 80-hour overtime for the 14-day period?
So the way, the way that the schedule, the way that the schedule works, it is, if they're working more than 80 hours in that, in that period, it's, it does kick into overtime. But if they're, also if they're working more than, more than their regular shift, so if they're scheduled for, they're automatically scheduled for the 80 hours during that two-week period. And anytime that they're working over that or in addition to that, it's considered overtime. Now, so one week, there's, I think it's 30, 32 hours that they work. And then the next week, it's, it's the additional. If they, if they work more than, than that initial 30, 32 hours in that first week, they're still getting overtime for that because it is the entire two-week period that's being taken into account.
Yeah, either one.
But so the third two doesn't come in here, and it doesn't separate that out. It does specifically call out over 80 hours in a 14-day period. It doesn't separate it. The part I'm referring to is under section 9.5 court time. Where it says... Page 23, Trustee Kelly. 23. Thank you. 23 of the packet. It's page eight of the agreement. Where it says unless, the first paragraph at the end, unless exceeding 40 hours, then at the overtime rate of one and one-half times their straight time hourly rate of pay, the guaranteed minimum of two hours. So this is for court time. And then below, in the paragraph below, it continues to talk about 40 hours as the benchmark for when overtime would kick in. Part B continues the 40-hour discussion. So I'm trying to figure out how are we evaluating 40 hours versus 80 in a 14-day period?
Lori, could you, could you address that a little better than I did? And I'm just asking because you're dealing with it more on the, you know, how we're actually paying it out every week.
Right. So court time is a whole special deal, right? To time away from their normal days off and those types of things or being here assigned, you know, like working shift yet not on the job there in court. So that's, that's a whole other story. But I will tell you that anything above, like, let's say somebody works 13 hours today and is scheduled to work 12 hours tomorrow, but for some reason they only work 10, they will still get an hour of overtime for that 13 hours. So anything above that is outside of their normal work schedule, they get overtime for it.
Okay, can we agree that's not in this contract? In this contract, overtime is defined as time over 80 hours in a 14-day period. It's what's written in.
I believe if I can find it, I will, I will discuss.
Okay. Yeah, if you can find it, let me know because the way I read all of this was there's 40 hours mentioned and there's 80 hours mentioned. I've not seen anything that's over 12 in one day or...
We'll get back to you on that.
And then on page 25 in section 9.9, in the middle of the first paragraph, per callback, this callback, this is talking about overtime again, a per callback. This may just be a sentence issue, but since this is a contract, I want to make sure it's correct. It says, "Employees called back to the employer's premises at the specified time on a regular scheduled workday shall be paid for a minimum of two hours or be compensated for the actual work time, whichever is greater at the regular straight time hourly rate of pay, unless exceeding 40, 80 hours in any 14-day duty." I don't know what a 40, 80 hour.
So, so it would be a 40-hour work week or an 80-hour work cycle?
But based on the, on the sections above and the defining of the two days on, two days off, there's two days on, three days off, three days on, whatever that schedule is, there will be weeks, as the chief was just talking about, that they are scheduled over 40 hours, but they're not outside that 80. So in those weeks where they're over the 40, because the week before they were 30, are we saying they automatically get overtime for that week since it's over 40 a week?
I would read it that way, yes.
So every officer, every pay period will always be guaranteed overtime?
We don't, honestly, we don't do callbacks very frequently.
No, what I'm saying is, if we're, I'm on the 40-hour thing, take a callback out of it.
Okay.
If what we're saying is anytime over 40 hours in a week, somebody gets overtime. There will always be overtime for one of their two weeks in every pay period.
No, we're, we're measuring that by the 80-hour, the 14-day.
So where, how does the 40-hour get measured?
I guess I'll, I need to reread the section that you're in so that...
Well, because it mentions 40 in a lot of different sections. That's why I'm just asking. 40 is state law?
No, but the contract was superseded.
Did you, if you have something to add to it?
I didn't write the contract, so I don't want to, and I haven't, I haven't reviewed it. It's not, we have special counsel for that. I do know that at times in other contracts that I have looked at, there are demarcations for different duties for 40 or 80 hours, such as if it's a 40-hour court time, then that would turn to the 40-hour overtime if you're at court for more than 40 hours. However, I am, I, I just, you have to judge this contract on the words of the contract. I have not looked at it. I am not trying to shirk my responsibilities. I really like working here, but it is not my domain. And if you want me to, I can follow up with Labor Council tomorrow. I'll get an answer for everybody with it.
Trustee Kelly, I apologize. I do not ask our special counsel to be here tonight with this purpose. Sorry, Lori, did you?
Oh, I did want to, well, Josh was like, flagging me so late. I did want to mention that we do have officers that are on 40-hour work weeks as well. So our school resource officers would be measured on a 40-hour work week. They work, you know, outside of the summertime when they're, they're working 12-hour shifts. They do work 40.
I understand that Ron Passerelli, who is our attorney, has reviewed this as well as the council and has been approved by those councils, so I'm confident that it's written correctly. Just need to get back to that clarification.
And it should be noted too that we, our last contract was based on an eight-hour workday for all patrol officers. And then we were working under a memorandum of understanding, I believe, or a side letter, maybe.
That's right.
Exactly what it was that incorporated these 12-hour shifts into, into the contract. So going back and changing all this was very difficult.
Completely understood. And that's why I'm looking for clarity on this. I'm not questioning it. I'm just looking for clarity because even under holiday pay, it references 40 hours as the overtime part. So when I say it happens multiple times through this contract...
So holiday pay, I'll be perfectly honest with, with respect to that. Holiday pay is really a monetary thing?
No, that part I agree with. What I'm saying is that it says...
What I mean is they don't get holidays off. They have to work holidays, basically, or they can, they have the option of floating eight hours.
Then I totally understand. What I'm saying is that it specifically calls out unless exceeding 40 hours, then at the overtime rate of one and a half. So it's calling out a benchmark of which overtime is done. I just want to understand when an officer is getting paid overtime. We'll get something prepared for it.
Yep.
I haven't been able to stop.
No, keep going.
Page 39 in the packet, 24th agreement, under military leave. It's just like the opinion of SAC. I think it's great that we do military leave and that there's no loss of benefits for seniority or rights during the active duty status. Was there any consideration of continuation of the variance of pay between what they would make as an officer and what they make as a military? It's often significantly less.
You mean paid at the military rate or at the...
No. So if somebody gets called to active duty, let's say, they, they will earn a military pay. And when they go on military leave, we continue their benefits, but the pay, according to this, the pay doesn't continue. Some places will say, I'm not going to pay you your full amount, but I will pay the difference to bring you to what you would have earned since the military pays significantly less than what your role would be paying. Just wondered if there is any conversation or discussion around that.
No, that was not, that was not brought up by you.
It was not. And then the bereavement, chief. Like that we offer the bereavement, and it says the three scheduled days for immediate family and then one day for extended family. It then talks about 10 workdays of unpaid bereavement leave to be taken within 60 calendar days.
It's a state statute.
Right. So is that a separate, like, would somebody ask for it all at once? Or this gives them the leeway to say, okay, I'm going to do unpaid? Do they have to take it unpaid or can they, if they have banked vacation hours or sick time, can they use that time to get paid during that?
They absolutely.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. Yes.
Okay, so in that condition, it would just be an understanding with management that they're taking up to 10 days, but they're going to do it as sick time or vacation time if they have enough.
That may not be considered bereavement leave if they just use regular...
That's, that's what I'm saying. It's a management discretion that they would say, you know, this isn't a bereavement leave. You're going to...
That would be the employee's choice, not employee's choice to pay one way or the other.
Right.
But it's still up to manager discretion on improvement of vacations. Do we not provide our officers with a weapon? Because then here, when it talks about equipment purchase, it says we can loan them the money, but we don't offer a purchase?
We do not. We do not purchase weapons for the officers as a matter of practice. That's, that's something that's been well established before I came. So each officer purchased their own, their own handgun. And if they opt to purchase a rifle, they have to, they have to purchase a department-approved rifle. But that's all at their own expense. So we provide every other piece of uniform equipment to them aside from their firearm. So this, what this does is this allows, for the most, for the most part, every officer is buying their handgun when they come on. And as far as, I think we had one instance in the past where, where we had allowed an officer to purchase their handgun under a similar type of provision. But the, the real driving force behind this part of the contract was, was the purchase of officer-owned rifles and, and their interest in doing that. And this will allow them to do that, and it also gives us a benefit of having, you know, of having those rifles properly and personally taken care of by the officers that own them. And, you know, and it reduces the number of rifles that we have to buy. And most officers really would rather have their own rifle than, than have one that's been, you know, bounced around in a trunk for, for a while. Even though we maintain them, they'll definitely take care of them better than, better than that. So that's...
That's standard practice amongst other types of departments as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I mean, there's, there's many, many departments that buy the officers a handgun initially, their initial purchase. We don't do that. We haven't done that as a matter of practice in the, you know, long before I came here.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Patrol Officers of Police and Labor Council.
So moved.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kirk, can you call the board, please?
Mr. Matt. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Thank you. We'd ask your consideration of a resolution approving an agreement with Assured Partners of Illinois LLC. Ms. Lyons will summarize this if you have any analysis in the packet.
So essentially, this is a form or an agreement that does two things for us. It establishes an agreement, a written agreement between us and Assured Partners. We've worked with them and their credit assessor, I'll say, for, I don't know, maybe 15 years at least. So it establishes that in a written agreement, they, so Assured Partners are our broker for our medical benefits, medical, dental, vision. They do our, they initially helped us set up our flexible spending accounts, et cetera. So it establishes this written agreement with that, with respect to that. And then secondly, there, there is some special exchange of information, as everybody knows, with respect to HIPAA. And I would say honestly, the brokers are not currently receiving any type of HIPAA information because we're under an Affordable Care Act plan and we do not need to acquire any information with respect to pre-existing conditions or conditions, et cetera. But it, it does talk about the exchange of information as well. And just to let you know, Assured Partners is not compensated directly by the village. It is part of their agreement with the lenders or the carriers, if you will, of the various products.
Does anybody have any questions for Miss Lyons?
So this agreement just gives them access to PHI?
Um, it, I guess, I think technically yes, but I don't believe that they're receiving that type of information right now because we are a small group on Affordable Care Act, um, plan. So.
But the agreement would allow it should it be necessary.
Right. So in other words, perhaps you're shaking your head. Um, do you want to talk about HIPAA? Brian speaks to HIPAA a lot.
So I, yeah, we probably, I'm sure it's, uh, we can, after the meeting.
The answer is if we were to change plans or something and, and experience became important, then they would have to have, they would legally see that information, but it's not currently happening. Cause as you know, they say it's specifically purely hatred, not experience.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash twelve, a resolution approving an agreement with Assured Partner of Illinois LLC. If we're down to trustee, I need to vote the same.
No.
Roll call please.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Want to dance by two?
Thank you. With that, um, Mr. Ray is going to present a brief summary of, uh, the chicken license, uh, ordinance and the experience that the village has had for the last, uh, probably a year. Um, so he'll go over some recent statistics and then engage in any conversation you feel like you have.
Last year in June, the village board passed, uh, an ordinance allowing backyard chickens in village, uh, for single-family residences. Uh, currently allows ten licenses. Each licensee can have up to four hens. There are several requirements related to sanitation, screening, placements of hoops and runs. Um, and so over the course of the first year, uh, the board's request staff surveyed the licensees to get their experience on licensing process, the permitting process, their, uh, feelings about the ordinance after having the chickens. Uh, so we did a survey at the time that the first group of licensees got their licenses, uh, last fall, I believe. And then when the year rolled around and the licenses went for renewal, we didn't have some changeover. So we put out another survey. Uh, each time there were three responses out of the ten that were sent to. Uh, overall level of satisfaction was neutral to positive, but there was a significant dissatisfaction expressed toward the number of hens allowed, where most people thought more was not enough. Um, either because they wanted more or because the cost of putting up the coop and everything didn't, uh, just go along with the benefit of, of having only four chickens. Um, so six to eight was suggested. One respondent suggested that it be based on the size of their lot, so a larger lot, more chickens. There's also some dissatisfaction expressed towards the screening requirements that it was unnecessarily costly, although one licensee hoped it would continue, um, after the current ones have had to put that investment in. Uh, so other than that, staff has not received any code enforcement complaints related to this, uh, which is the, similar to what we talked with in other communities. So we, before we first, uh, before the board first passed this ordinance. So at this time, there's no action needed unless the board wishes to make any modifications. And we can of course make those adjustments at a future meeting.
Mr. Ray, the, uh, number permits, how many do we have at current?
All ten.
All ten. Do we get inquiries on the regular about?
I would not, I would not say on the regular unless Linda has something else, but we, we had, I think, one extra, an eleventh person apply this year after, uh, before we were able to take the survey down.
Some people have, um, you know, licenses filled with, called mixed. Maybe two or three.
So we do an interest.
Yeah.
That was, uh, brought up. I think that, uh, my words were used in public comment again, which is my favorite. Uh, because I think Mr. Acker and I had a conversation at Hampshire Social one time and that's how I feel about chickens, which is if you wanted chickens, you should have bought a farm. But I, again, it's not, it's not, it's not my village and this is what the community wants. This is what the board wants, so that's fine. But, uh, our conversation was made, um, you know, we did, we had the survey out, right? It was, it was, it was online. It wasn't, it wasn't sent directly to the residents or was it on our website?
It was on our website and the link to the survey was emailed directly to all the current licensees.
So there is a chicken, so I, I, because I thought I remember seeing it right under the current news, right on the homepage about the?
Uh, I think it was under the, the department's page.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we sent emails to all, all the ten licensees each time, make sure we had the right emails.
Typically, we.
Three responses. Three out of ten each time.
So the results we see here represent three of the ten?
Three, yeah. So six out of twenty potential responses. So two surveys, ten each time.
And we haven't had any code enforcement violations, issues, that kind of thing?
I would say the only issue was, um, a couple, uh, one person didn't like that they were, they were going to use their existing shed, I think. And they didn't like that they were going to have to move it or there, there was a small issue like that, but it was resolved, uh, in the fall. Other than that, no, no code enforcement.
Nothing outstanding.
Correct.
As far as like, uh, utilizing a, a shed and that kind of stuff, we did have to send out, expect, like you guys did in stack.
There was a final inspection after each one was, uh, so the process is to get a license from the village clerk, pay the fee for the license, then get a building permit, construct a coop, construct a run. There's an inspection on that.
So say, so say somebody did decide to want to use a shed, coop or not, they'd still have to follow our code. And if it was a shed, they'd need to put it in a concrete field.
Sheds not required to be on concrete.
Wow. It needs to be on.
It's required to be anchored properly, according to the code, yeah.
So what, I guess the, what I'm asking is anything that is built within or for the specific use of a chicken, so it has to go through the building permit process just as if any other structure, right?
Generally, yes. If they're going to build a shed type structure, it'll be reviewed that way. There are prefabed coops that you can put in an anchor that are not as expensive of a building. But yes, they'll still go through the permit process.
What are you thinking, guys?
I'm all into the discussion of whether tents are right. Changing current regulations, if there's a majority of the current licensee responding to. If it was like eight out of ten or nine out of ten and that was ongoing theme, then maybe it's something to discuss. Thirty percent of the current licensees would respond to that. That's a fair representation. I mean, I appreciate they did respond. I wish everybody would have said, you know, I'm speaking.
Good neighbors. How, how do we, let's just play this out. Not saying that you're wrong. But what, what do we do? We, uh, just tell Josh, I know where all the addresses are for the chicken coops and then send a letter to all the neighbors? Or do we just have to have, or to tell the chicken coops? No, no, no. I understand that. That's what I'm asking.
Well, I guess my thing was you can't renew your license for this year. It was not serving. That was my idea. Sorry, you didn't listen to the information. It was pilot program.
Yeah, so we did talk about that.
We, we said we needed information, so you guys are going to be our testers. And if you're not going to give us the information that we need to make a responsible choice, then.
That legal, did that deny a permit because his survey wasn't filled out? Counselor? That's a yes or no question.
It was not required.
Not required.
If you want more responses, we can like have a greater effort. We could call people. We could send them additional emails. That, that was not our intent. It's a surveillance survey. Like we always do.
Yeah.
We shouldn't have to.
That's true.
Necessarily. Really, there's nothing under consideration that we're, like them, other than the number of licenses that seems to be the top here right now.
It's whether or not we grow the program or leave it. I don't think existing license holders would say that.
But if we need to make changes to the ordinance, we need to hear Natalie from now on. Sorry, you know, the neighbors would be.
Yeah, because the ordinance, I think, lists the ten, right? So we'd be changing ordinance anyways, so rather than paying to change it multiple times.
Yeah. We can, uh, pilot part two, enforce them, if you will, to.
No, there's no, there's no, we can't force somebody to fill out a survey.
No.
No, I, I, I'm not saying we should force somebody to fill out a survey. I'm just saying if only thirty percent knows something out, then it shouldn't trigger a change to something because thirty percent.
Right. Because there's not enough data for it to support the change.
Right.
That was my only point. I, I, I think that it's great for the thirty percent that filled it out. I was going to ask if we could have access to the results, but thirty percent, I think we're good. I do agree with trustee Fodor though that, and maybe it's just an open to the community and not necessarily just the neighbors, because it gives the neighbors an opportunity to say, hey, here's the situation. This is the pilot program. Here's the report on the pilot program. How, and no issues, no ordinance violations reported. No issues beating, nothing on file, right? Um, here's a survey to the community. Is there any feedback to the community? Keep that in consideration. Is that neighbors or others? Provide the. Just.
I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to, we're not going to get the responses, I don't think. But I mean, it's not. I mean, we can, we can probably, how much time is it going to take you to throw together a similar survey with similar questions?
You're going to have fifty people for it, fifty people against it.
I don't even.
A hundred for it or a hundred against it, and we'll be right back addressing the same thing again.
Yeah, we have a hard time getting the responses. I mean, we, we, we offer free stuff even, like coffee cups and that, you know, for information. We try the coffee cup, give away coffee cups. People want those. So I mean, I.
I know I had complaints about neighbors about, about pools, for example. So if you start asking neighbors about their neighbors, you get into a whole.
Uh, trust me, we get enough of those anyway. To see, the, the problem, the only problem that I have, the only, I guess not problem. The only concern I have is if we start asking about, hey, what don't you like about your neighbors? You know, I mean, it's, at the end, at the end, at the end, at the end of the day, somebody that's unhappy is going to let us know that they're unhappy, whether we want them to or not.
And so, and that's a good point, is that we have a mechanism for people to, to report things that are either wrong or, or they can call in to talk to staff about their concerns. It sounds like none of that has happened. There aren't any concerns lodged. There was a, a speaker this evening that gave his point of view, which I appreciate. Speaking in front of an audience is always a tough thing. It seems to me like there is a mechanism to get that feedback. If there is feedback or concerns.
And usually, if you don't have any concerns, you're not going to fill out a survey. So seventy percent of the licensees do not have, I'm going to assume do not have concerns. I'm basically just keeping it as it is. It's.
Is the ten count?
Well, that's what we're talking about. Do, do, do we, do we leave it at ten or do we expand it or do we, do we do it? What do you feel?
The question of the number of licenses really has nothing to do with the survey because those people wouldn't have an opinion on the number of licenses. It's more a question of five or six people that have contacted the little hall like that.
There is a.
We, we presume that the ten we have will keep them because they've already built a group.
Linda, what was, you said try again next year? Is what you were saying? But it's not, I mean, you're not talking like twenty or forty people following this. If you had to.
About three, the most. It's not really.
I'm, it's not hurt my feelings. Is that going to be a burden on staff at all if we increase the number? I would say five more permits? That, because frankly, at this point, I've already lost the balance. So I mean, what, five more? Um, that we typically don't allow public senators to report it.
Just a question.
We, we could speak after the meeting if you have. It's a, we, I used to allow it and then some. Add me as a dialogue with everybody.
I just like to know how it was communicated. That's all.
Like I said, we could speak after the meeting, but we put it out on social and put it out on the website. So what do we feel? So we've got one trustee here that says.
Five more.
Five more. So I've got two for five more. Ms. Fodor? Okay. So I've got three for five more because she didn't fill out the survey, so she's cool with it. Trustee Coe?
Doesn't matter to me, but I think we could increase the amount of, depending on who's, whoever's set the survey in should be able to add two more, the ones that did it.
So no coffee cup, just a couple extra hens.
That's right.
Okay.
If you took the time to fill the survey out, you get two more. You don't take the time, tough one.
It's not retroactive. So if you fill it out now, tough to dance. You're going to deliver it.
That's right.
I mean, there's, you know, complaints and ordinance violations, I think, might, it gives people that want the opportunity. That's a consensus. We'll draft an ordinance. Go back to the.
Great. Thank you for everybody. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for today. All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have the financial report and the streets report. You guys want a in-depth presentation or you want to look over them and then, uh, ask Miss Lyons or Mr. Coe some question?
I just want to say, uh, on page one of the financial report, since it shows the full, I just want to, uh.
A page what?
It's page sixty-eight, the first page in the financial report. I just want to, like, really give credit to the staff and the extended staff. Because if you look at this, the total village ended the year, and I know there are reasons why. Ended the year with a one point seven million dollar surplus, which can go to help a lot of the projects that I know are on Mr. Hedges and the staff's list of things that needed to get done forty years ago. And so I appreciate everyone working hard for that. I get that it may be slightly different than one point seven, but according to the finance report for twelve months, total village is one point seven nine four.
So again, I have to comment on that.
We don't have that much.
Yeah, that's unreal.
This is the end of a twelve-month cash basis period. And we do use modified accrual accounting, so we will be using our thirteenth period. Um, and, um, doing a lot of journal entries to, um, add things such as compensated absences that need to be accounted for and those types of things. So there will be some changes to those numbers, but trust me, it's not going to go.
It's not going to be materially different, right? My kudo still stands?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions about either report? Okay. Next, we have the accounts payable. Anyone have any questions for the accounts payable this evening? You don't have any personnel? And it's a relatively small amount for me.
This is going to happen on the, what I mean, it's on the first of the month. Like on the first day of the month, we don't have any bills from them.
Trustee Coe, just because I see it on here, is mosquito management reached out to me and they will make.
Not yet.
They're pretty dry.
Yeah, yeah. When, when I'm in the backyard having a whole beverage and I get bit, that's when I call.
I saw the first one yesterday.
I tell you, I was up in northern Wisconsin over the weekend and they, uh, used trustee coastline. They were big enough they could take down a sparrow.
They, they could fight up there.
They were bad in the middle of the daytime. It was terrible. Any other questions? Comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the irregular accounts payable in the amount of eighty one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifteen cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, Ms. Clark, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
We should pass that zero.
Okay, next, uh, village board committee reports. Mr. Kelly?
BDC will meet next week, regular time, regular location.
Mr. Coe?
Page seventy-six of your package. Your place or your, uh, street report. I, I think everybody's seen the street sweeper out, cleaning out manholes. Um, that's the nastiest, dirtiest job you can get. But, yeah, the street sweeper's been a godsend. So is the rubber tire on the lawn.
And we did send the street sweeper and the operator down to Burlington this week for, to help them out. It's like you're encouraging us to do, uh, intergovernmental interviews.
Yeah, we're trying to work with surrounding towns and do some shared services and that. And we're hoping to reap some of the benefit. I mean, we're, we're always first to say, yeah, sure, we'll do that. And so I know that we've gotten some things from other communities, but now more of the local communities are really getting on board with it.
And we have some preliminary interest in. We have some preliminary interest in crack.
Mr. Kelly, you're up again.
I've got your report.
This is the best weather one that we got yet. Mr. Robinson.
No report from PR committee.
Better. All right, new business, I have one thing, but I will let anybody else, does anybody else have any new business? Okay. New thing is I just kind of want to get the pulse of the board here. I sent an email kind of with my thought process as, as related, in relation to the appointment of the new trustee, or the open trustee position, and I just kind of want to, I don't necessarily, I don't want to talk names or any of that kind of stuff, yet, but what I would like to do is get the feel for the board. Last appointment didn't go smoothly as I would have liked, and so I'm trying to, oh, it's, it's all, it's all, I'm making sure that all the board is on the same page. My thought process is, there's been a lot of interest in the position, both from, I will call it, quote-unquote, internal candidates, people serving on commissions that we have currently, and then there have been a bunch of people that have reached out for the community, whether it be people that are in the normal circles, or people that know somebody that knows somebody that would be interested in helping the community out. Historically, when we've had a vacancy, and I can only speak to this as far as historically one time, because it's only happened to be one time in my time here, we pulled one of our commissions, people that have already served for us, and the reason generally is that it is, is it takes less time for a person already involved to get up to speed, because they already have an understanding of the, you know, our operations, and then, not only that, but, I mean, they, I always use the baseball type analogy, like sports, I always go back to sports, right, so I mean, like, this is major leagues, right, like you're up at the, at the DIAAS now as a trustee, you know, we have a lot of dedicated people, and there are people that have, you know, proven themselves on our commissions, and that's to be like minor leagues, so I would prefer employees, not say that their job is minor, I'm just saying that in general, that they don't have to run for election and all that kind of stuff, you know, and so I, my thought process is to look internally, quote-unquote, internally, it's still public. I just wanted to get the feel for the board, or we could go and we could post it, you know, publicly and say, this is what we want to do. This is where we're looking for people, but regardless, if we pull from inside, or put inside, we're going to have to backfill and post that position.
That was going to be my question, we have enough trouble getting people to fill those positions, fully, is that going to create an issue to get someone else on the commission that loses a member?
I would, we would have these conversations with the chairmans, right, because of how we, the chairpeople, because what we've done, you know, at this point, has empowered all of our committee chairs, our commission chairs, to kind of run their team, right? So before we, quote-unquote, steal somebody off of their commission, we'd have those conversations first, make sure that there's no void, you know, or if they were in the middle of something really important, and they valued this person's expertise, you know, that kind of thing, I would rely on their judgment as well, I wouldn't just say, I want this person, I'm taking, and that's it, you know?
No, I, I understand that, I just, you could fill that spot then if.
So, we're not up against a timeline with those positions, this one, this one at the board level, I think, what's 30 days that we have to fill some, 30 or 60?
It's defined in section 3.1 dash 10 dash 50 of the law, and I believe that the mayor has to put in a name, make a suggestion for the advising consent of corporate authorities of the, or maybe the village board, or leading members of corporate authorities, within either 60 or 30 days, and then, there's 30-day cycles after that, if, if the first person doesn't go through, a second candidate would go through, there's votes on that, and there's a temporary appointment thereafter. So we do have a, we are on a clock, proverbially, to ensure that this is done appropriately, with, and I think the president's point is, if we, if someone was taken off of, let's say, an auxiliary board committee, that there would be no vacancy timeline requirement set forth in the municipal code, like there is for trustees or other elected officials.
So, in your discussions with just members of the public, not on those auxiliary boards or committees, are, is there interest for any of those people to serve on an auxiliary board committee? If the decision is made to pull someone from one of those committees?
Absolutely, absolutely. That was, that was one of my conversations as well, made sure I had that conversation, say, say we decide to go another direction, you should still be willing to serve another candidacy. What are we, are we comfortable with that kind of thought process?
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to the, to the days when we had a plan commission in the zoning board of appeals, and we couldn't get enough people to serve on one of them.
Yeah.
You know, so, again, concern would be the, the, filling out all the committees.
Was it the, Mr. Rock, was it the plan commission that you guys were down several members for a long period of time, or is that pre-cut, where you?
We were down receiver too, but it was, it was still both commissions, I recall.
That's, I think that's why we consolidated one.
Part of it.
Just kind of let people fill out surveys, put it out there, people, some want to apply, okay, that's what I needed, I needed to have that discussion, I appreciate you guys' feedback. No, that's fine, anybody else? Everybody's looking at me like, be quiet, we want to get this done under.
I have to say a clarification, not on that point, but Mr. Kelly, I believe next, Wednesday would be the first, might say, of the month.
Oh, you're right, so it isn't.
Be two weeks, yeah.
Sorry, for BDC, thank you for the pleasure. No, it's, it's one of the first, the Thursdays, the first, right? In my opinion, it's your appointment to make, ours to consider, so whatever process you go through, I would just ask the question that, regardless of where they currently sit, of the people you've spoken with, are the ones that are currently on committees that you spoke with the most qualified?
Well, that's kind of a hard question, honestly, to answer, because what makes one person more qualified to?
In your, in your opinion.
Okay, in that, in that sense, my, my guess, my thought process would be is, I would really like, I would really like somebody that has roots within the community that wants to stick around for a while, so it's not somebody that's going to be on our board for a couple of years and then leave the community. I feel that, that there's been people that have run for office in this community over the years, that have made perfectly clear that their intentions is to do this for a little while and then leave, and so, I don't, I don't, I want somebody that's going to make the decisions, if that's what you're going to say.
So, to trustee Co's statement earlier, so, that's a yes?
About?
The, the people or person, or whoever you're thinking is the most qualified for position.
Oh, in, in that, in that regard, yes, that, that's what I was thinking.
If this is an appointment by the village president, just do, do your thing and bring it to us, I don't want to be part of a, a long process, if, if you have.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you guys to be part of a long process, I'm just asking to bet that the, just make sure that everybody's comfortable, and I appreciate your feedback. One other thing we just want to, we just want to cover, as far as an announcement goes, is June 12th, there's a public hearing for the light property and intruder school at 7.
May I make clarification?
Good.
So, no, not at all, I just want to speak to Mr. Kelly's point about the overtime hours, I did send you an email during the meeting, however, at the top of page 8 of the agreement, it would be page 23 of the patent, I'll read the sentence that I'm talking about, overtime shall be paid at the basis of time and one half, one and one half, of the officer's straight time hour pay on any day when an officer works in excess of 12 hours. It's the first little sentence of the patent.
That doesn't stress 40 hours, that, that's asking about 40.
Below it does, it says overtime worked in excess of 40 hours in a 7-hour period also will be compensated on the basis of time, which means, in those weeks, as the chief said, an officer has more than 40-hour schedule, since it's maybe four 12s in that 7-hour period, they are scheduled for regular. And it will happen almost every shift. It'll be 48 hours a week, one week will be 48, the other week will be 32, it just alternates which week is which, that is.
That's your statement, I'm like, you want to ask me a question?
No, no, I, and my math may be way off, and I, I don't mind, I'm just trying to understand, because when we talk about budgets, if you go through the budget cycle, often overtime is one of the things that's evaluated, looked at, and understanding how we get to that number.
That's going to a 12-hour shift, it's decided, you so. It's been changed.
Okay. Please don't take this as me saying officers should get overtime, I'm not saying, just seeking understanding, so I know how.
Does that answer your question, or would you like to stick it back?
No, that answered my question, I'm forgetting about to be in the same day. One final question, trustee that resigned, was the resignation not raised and all done proper and all that?
Yeah, we are following up on that.
No, no, I want the yes or no.
The answer is no.
The answer is no, the answer is no, it was not done correctly, I didn't, but we are following up on that.
Okay. For an announcement check.
Yeah.
The other thing I just want to say, for the record, is just an acknowledgement and thank you to Mr. Pack, and to everyone involved for the three-day ceremonies, and to, so Cub Scouts of Wisconsin, Cub Scouts to help to hold the flags, that was great, we were village managers out there.
The mayor might, the mayor might have been out there too, but.
Thank you to everybody in the community that came.
Mr. Hedges is really, really involved with the, it's very uplifting that, on the weekend night. Kind of cool to see, and they're just not as tall as Mr. Rock, so, once down the flag holes, they're a little tougher for the kids than what you see around.
How's the memorial look?
I was on top. I was at home with the kiddo under the weather, the feedback that I got was that it was a very nice area.
I can tell you, I wanted to come and do it.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All papers? I propose?